Greetings and welcome everyone. It is seven P M, Thursday, November sixth, twenty twenty five, and we are going to call to order the city council meeting as of now. Start with the pledge of allegiance, please stand.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation, under God, in the fiscal liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, let's start from the left. Councilwoman Getz.
Here.
Councilwoman Ray.
Here.
Ray.
Here.
Counselor, get, it says, Counselor Gould.
There.
In the wait for other one to return. While we're waiting for him, are there any additions to the agenda, Rick?
No.
All right, we're not gonna wait around for this, this is a meeting we're having scheduled. So, right now, we're gonna go into a public comment on non-agenda items. The city council values and welcomes public input on matters of city concern. Please address the council as a whole rather than individual council members. The council may direct staff to resolve the issue or schedule the matter for further council discussion. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person within optional two minutes for council questions and answers. If you wish to address council, please come forward to the podium and identify yourself with name and address with record. Thank you.
But now's the time?
Now's the time, come on up. Come on up.
I'm the owner of the place at Troy. Hi, I'm pretty big council members. Where they meet you, K Miller, I live at seven twenty-five, coming on Avenue, doing Jarvis. Been a resident for about three years now, and I'm coming here to find out what the city can do for my nuisance neighbors. We have the gentleman that owns the house is currently indisposed, so he has allowed several people to move in. They come with about eight, thirteen cars every night. They bring in their trailers. They park and neither one of us can park on our side of the street. And realize I don't own the street, but we have to be able to park in our, on our side of the street. And so I'm really upset about that. They come all hours of day and night, and they need garbage, and like I said, I can't get out of my drive. And I'm not the only one that is upset about that. I'm just the only one bringing up to come here playing about. They currently store their boat there, and there's their lake RV, so when you look out my window, you see all this ugliness that wasn't there a month ago. You know, next thing we're gonna have is the bus. I mean, when does it, when does the city state that it's safe on that for some? So, that is my biggest issue with the neighborhood. I mean, it's a beautiful neighborhood, it's a grand subdivision. It needs to be kept up, and with all the neighbors who are farmed, we're not ones. We are everything to maintain that beautiful neighborhood, and now we have this ugly ice water. That is my idea.
Have you reached out to the non-urban scanner for the police department?
I, I reached out to Officer Carlos, I don't know if he's not saying, he came on top of the lady. Uh, but she has permission to be there, but she's bringing all her wonderful little friends. And there's nothing law enforcement can do, because she was given the opportunity, the right to be there, but, like I said, she's bringing all the other people that don't belong there, that don't live there. There's only two owners to the house. The lady will gab, and it's the gentleman, and so he just cartwashes to whoever works in the house. I mean, and then the galleys are there, you know, but it's causing havoc on the neighborhood. First, you move the credit to the right, and she was giving three days, and she really experienced on the other side of the scene, and then they were another three days. I mean, the beauty doesn't change in three days, you didn't see it. So, and I said, they have a boat now, they have their light trailer, it's an ugly ice water.
Okay, you please get with the city council, our city manager over here, Rick, and see if there's something he can find, so we can discuss and see if there's something we can do with breakfast. Legally, officers already said that there's nothing we can see to do. That's one thing with ordinances, but there's still limitations for people being nuisances, things like that, that maybe he could figure something out, help out with. So, please do that.
Thank you so much for taking time.
Thank you for coming, I thank you. Anyone else? I presume, yes, we're on a good one now, I guess. All right, well, we're gonna move right along. Next, everybody on the agendas consent calendar, the approval of minutes for October ninth, the council meeting, and the October twenty-fourth, closing sessions. Does council have a chance to look over this?
I did look over these. It says goal setting work session, but it's the budget that it's actually wanting us to look over, not the work session. Or is it work session budget committee, but it's just the budget committee stuff that's in here, not the work session?
We're gonna appear a little wrong set of minutes instead of goal setting, the budget committee minutes we put in there instead. So, we'll just ask you to adopt the council minute meetings, item A of the consent agenda.
I motion to approve item A, improve minutes for October ninth, city council meeting.
Do you have a second?
Second.
The motion and then second, and let's take a vote. All those in favors for approval, the minutes for October ninth, the council meeting, the aye.
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 Will I immediately move to next meeting, Rick?
Yes.
Things are And now we are going to open a public hearing for an alley vacation. Good evening, my name is Brian Wagner. I'm the mayor of the city of Jervis, and I will be presiding over this hearing. This is the time and place for the public hearing in the matters of file number V A C two zero two five dash zero one. Like alley vacation petition for block eighteen, Jervis Elementary School. The hearing is now open. It is seven oh seven P M. Oregon land use law requires several items to be read into the record at the beginning of every public hearing. The city planner will review this material. Her patience is appreciated as she goes through these statements.
Thank you, mayor. The applicable substantive criteria upon which this case will be decided are found in the Oregon revised statutes two seven one point zero eight zero through two seven one point two three zero. The specific criteria are summarized in the staff report and will be reviewed at this hearing. All testimony and evidence received during this public hearing must be directed for these approval criteria or to such other rule, law, regulation, or policy which you would like, believe to apply to this case. An issue which may be the basis for an appeal to the land use board of appeals shall be raised no later than the close of the record at or following the final evidentiary hearing on this case. Such issues shall be raised with and accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford this body and a parties to this hearing, an adequate opportunity to respond each issue. This case will proceed with the staff report and any other comments from governmental agencies in attendance, followed by all those in support of the application. All those opposed to the application will then be allowed to speak, followed by those with general comments who are neither for nor against the application. Finally, the applicant will be entitled to a rebuttal period, including any questions this body may have of staff or the applicant. All speakers should try to limit your comments to three minutes. Please submit a speaker card completed with your name and mailing address directly to the city manager. Please state your name clearly for the record. Please try to avoid repetition. If someone else has already expressed the same thoughts, it's perfectly all right to state that you agree with the statements of that previous speaker. Please be assured that everyone will have an opportunity to speak. If you have documents, maps, or letters that you wish to have considered by this body, they must be formally placed in the record of this proceeding. To do that, either before or after you speak, please leave materials with city staff. We'll make sure your evidence is properly taken care of. Prior to the conclusion of the first hearing on a land use application, any participant made a request of continuation to present additional evidence or testimony regarding the application. Thank you.
With that out of the way, I need to ask the audience and fellow counselors a few questions. Please speak up. Number one, does any member of the audience have any objections to the notice that was published? Number two, does any member of the audience wish to challenge the jurisdiction of the city council to hear this matter? Number three, does any member of the city council wish to declare a potential or actual conflict of interest?
I'm a city imperious law. I am an employee of the school district, uh, uh, the elementary school.
I have a former.
Now, who I have a permanent.
Thank you. Does any member of the city council wish to report insight visits or expertise contacts?
Would this be me saying that I go to the elementary school on a daily basis? I am an employee of the elementary school, and I go there daily.
And then skip number four. So, does any member of the city council wish to declare a bias? And finally, does any member of the audience or council wish to challenge the impartiality or ex parte disclosures of any member of the city council? Not seen any. City planner Holly Byram, please get this step recorded.
Thank you for those procedures. Uh, for the record, my name is Holly Byram, and I work for the Midland Valley Council of Governments. I serve as your contact city planner. My goal tonight is to help the council understand the decision criteria in front of you for this alley vacation. Uh, Jervis has actually processed a number of street and alley vacations in recent years. Um, so this one in particular is for the public alley in block eighteen, which is bound by Douglas Avenue, Cedar Avenue, first and second. It runs squarely underneath the existing elementary school building. As you probably saw in the applicant's materials, there were a number of old surveys, and there was confusion as to whether this exact section of alley had been vacated when the abutting sections were also vacated. Um, city staff searched, county searched, the applicant searched. No one could find legal evidence that this section had been vacated. So, uh, this is somewhat of a housekeeping issue to first, to process this alley vacation. Um, in the staff report, you'll see a couple of maps, including an aerial photo, um, and a street view photo indicating roughly the location of that alley. The alley section is twenty feet wide and two hundred feet long. So, when a, a local city processes a vacation application, um, it's a petition that's received from the abutting property owners asking for the city to release their jurisdiction on that right of way. And when that happens, you go through your public hearings, and what happens is that section of right of way is split down the center, and the paths are attached to the abutting properties. In this case, it's the same property owner on all sides of the public alley. And so, once vacated, this section of alley would transfer into school district ownership. Um, the decision criteria come from the Oregon revised statutes directly rather than the Jervis Development Code. Um, there are just a couple of criteria that need to be considered. The first is whether the consent of all of the owners have been attained. There's two different measures for this. You have to have a hundred percent signatures on all of the properties that touch the alley, and then you have to have um, two thirds of the area that they're calling the affected area, which extends in either direction in the path of that alley. So, the applicant has submitted all of those signatures, and those are attached in their application. Um, the next criteria is whether notice has been duly given. There's a couple of different types of notices that are required. Um, the first is publication in the newspaper, and then there's also posting notice on the site. And that's just a paper notice that gets battered by the rain and the winds, but the idea there is so the public passing by can understand there's action happening here. Um, there's also a mail notice that we do through the Jervis Development Code. Not all of those notices have been provided yet, partly due to the rapid fire of scheduling this hearing and moving forward quickly. Um, for that reason, staff is recommending tonight that we continue the public hearing at the end of our public testimony to next month, so that we can check the box on all the public noticing. So, I just wanted to point that out there. And then the last criteria is about whether the public interest would be prejudiced by the vacation. And what this means is, is this section of public right of way needed for transportation purposes, either vehicular or pedestrian? Probably not through that building. Does this section of right of way have existing utilities, water lines, sewer lines, even, um, fiber optics? Um, not that we're aware of. There was some discussion about a potential stormwater facility in the area, but to the best of our knowledge, it is not located within that alley right of way. So, um, the council can feel confident that you are not prejudice, prejudicing the, uh, public interest here at this location by vacating the alley. Um, the procedures after an approval are pretty straightforward. The applicant is, uh, responsible for taking the enacting ordinance to Marion County to have it reported and then returning a copy to the city. Typically, you would see a condition of approval here requiring the applicant to provide a legal description and a map for that ordinance, but they've already done that in their application package. And you see that in the materials tonight. Um, so pretty straightforward. The recommended motion is included on page five of the staff report. Again, that motion is to, at the end of this hearing, continue this public hearing to the next regular meeting of the Jervis City Council, which is uh, seven P M, Thursday, December fourth, twenty twenty five, so that we can satisfy all the required public noticing requirements. That concludes my comments. Um, you'll see attached to the staff report, the applicant's materials. Um, a lot of really useful old surveys there, uh, for reference. The applicant is here this evening, and I'm sure they would like to say, um, a few comments next. Thank you.
Are there any other members of staff who'd like to add comments to this report?
I have no additional comments.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff from the council before we continue and accept public testimony? Not seeing any. I will now accept public testimony regarding this case. Is there anyone who would like to speak in support of this application? Please come forward.
Good evening.
Get to hold it.
Your first, thank you. Yeah. Uh, does everyone have a copy of the presentation? It's there. One needs one kind of pictures. Thank you. Uh, good evening. See you all again. Um, my name is Sam Hock, I'm a planner with three J Consulting. Our address is nine six zero zero Southwest in Savin, operating in Bearden, Oregon, six zero zero eight. Um, this is a short and sweet presentation, uh, covers a lot of what Holly already talked about. Uh, appreciate the staff report, working with staff on this vacation petition, so thank you for your time this evening. Um, going to sort of that first page, it's just the current conditions similar to what Holly pointed out. Um, there's a currently dedicated alleyway through the building. Just to the right of that main sort of entrance accessway there. Um, that aerial view of the alleyway, uh, yellow box showing its location. Um, again, we thought it was vacated many years ago, but, uh, to turn up that evidence basically. Um, the school was originally built in nineteen thirty-four, just as some background, there's been some remodels and some interior modifications, and then the modular buildings were constructed in twenty thirteen, and just to sort of make clear, we're not proposing changes to the existing structures with this application. Uh, so what you're seeing is the existing box configuration with the alley, uh, running through the building. And then on that next page would be proposed conditions is, uh, what we're hoping these sites to end up looking like with no alleyway. Um, so it's, you know, essentially just to try to clean up this parcel configuration, um, which would allow for a more streamlined process when uh, interior improvements are proposed in terms of proof. Uh, so Holly went over the criteria, uh, based on the Oregon revised statutes, and I just kind of summarized sort of the, the district's um, role in that, uh, is to file the initial part petition, excuse me, which is our application materials that you all have, um, to, to obtain the consent of the nearby property owners and the property owner touching the alleyway, which is the district itself. And then to, uh, attend the duly noticed of hearings in this case. Um, so consent, uh, described needs to be obtained by the adjacent property owners and two thirds of the area in the vicinity. Um, the district obtained, uh, incentive of the nearby property owners, and, uh, we included all the signatures, petition materials. It's in a table that was included in the application materials. Um, this is sort of the, uh, the, the vicinity area that was described, it's two hundred feet, um, to either side, uh, or to the nearest parallel street, ten at four hundred feet. Sort of, uh, north and south of the alleyway. It's not exactly too north, but, um, thank you. And see that box drawn there? That's the, uh, affected area that the O R S describes. And then the, uh, table shows that the district obtained about ninety-five percent of the property owners, um, signing off on this. Um, that was all of the property owners except for the city, and, uh, that, that they would agree to this vacation after these proper procedures, um, in the public hearings are, are held. Um, so again, just to go back to our, our role in this, um, we filed the petition, obtained, um, more than two thirds of the consent required. And, um, are attending this hearing, which will then, it sounds like be continued to a second hearing to allow the proper public notice to be performed and put out. Um, which, uh, staff let us know that, that that was something that we should expect this evening and that we're in support of that, so. Yeah, that's, that's all I have. Thank you for your time, consideration, and happy to answer any questions.
Nice, fun and fascinating that we're fixing something that shouldn't have been fixed ninety years ago, just under ninety, yeah.
Okay, thanks again, Amber.
Thank you very much. Next, going to the checklist. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to the application? Not seen any. Is there anyone who would like to speak either, neither for or against the application? Are there any last public questions or comments? As a reminder, the applicant has the final word in the rebuttal. No. Now it's time for the applicant's rebuttal. Will the applicants, will the representative like to respond to any of the testimony? Would staff like to have any final comments? I guess they were in the checklist.
Yeah.
Okay, before I close the public hearing, are there any additional questions from the counselors, or staff, or anyone? As a reminder, once I close the hearing, only counselors or staff may speak. Not seeing any. Public testimony is now closed. I'll close the public hearing at seven twenty-four P M. I will now entertain city council discussion on the application and ordering motion. Does anyone have any comments?
I have a motion. Uh, to continue the public hearing for public alley vacation petition number V A C twenty twenty-five dash zero one to the time and date certain of the next regular city council meeting, seven P M on Thursday, December fourth, twenty twenty-five at the Jervis City Hall in order to satisfy all required public noticing prior to final decision.
A second.
Yeah, the motion is second. Go for it. Roll call votes, right to the left. Councilwoman Getz.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ray.
Aye.
Council President Ray.
Aye.
Councilman Getz.
Aye.
And Councilman Gould.
Aye.
The next item of business is, uh, resolution twenty-five oh one two. This was, does not require a public hearing, but we, but it's considered a good business practice to do a public hearing when you are considering a resolution at increased speeds. Allowing the opportunity for community members to speak their mind as it relates to this particular business item. Back in August, if you look on about page fifty-five of your packet, we started a conversation with, staff started a conversation with the council that it had been an extended period of time before we had, the city had looked at what we were expending for planning and permitting versus what our fees were, and therefore, we were not being made whole based upon the development that's happened. And so, we had a conversation with the council, August, um, um, as mentioned in that report that's in your packet on sixty-five and sixty-six, I believe. And, um, um, and you gave us the guidance to move forward. Now, I engage the services of the Midland Valley Council of Governments, uh, for several reasons. One, it's better if you're talking about fees that it's not the self-interest doing research. Uh, two, it's better if you have some organization that is familiar with our fees, um, including the administration of them. And thirdly, it's good to have some organization which also is well very familiar with other cities in our area as to what they're doing for fees. And so, for that reason, I engage the services of the Midland Valley Council of Government and the planning, uh, specifically their planning department chair, who has since been promoted to interim executive director of the Midland Valley Council of Governments. I don't know if that all fits on her door or not, but, um, I'd like to introduce Victor A. Carmichael, um, interim executive director, who facilitated the report, the research, and the resolution and the appendix, and this is the appendix amended to the resolution. The, uh, staff report starts on page forty-three, um, um, regarding this. Uh, the resolution's on forty-five, and then this is an amended copy of the appendix. Um, I think that's the introduction I need to give, other than welcome this evening, Madam Executive Director.
Nice to see everyone. Um, hopefully you've had the opportunity to review the staff report and then communicate with you. Um, your keys were updated last, um, in twenty twelve, so it's quick, quick, and time, uh, your keys were not, but, um, if you the expression, that's, uh, typical. You're not that necessary, that time frame, but a lot of our former, um, today's members, uh, keeping up with updating your fees should be something up to an annual. And I hope moving forward, we can kind of help those assume, never mind, we does that, we've even found that of the cost that we have been working on our fees annually and it just eventually gets a little bit. In the case here, you have applications that come in and, you know, we find that it's a cool behavior is that the applicants make their application with the fee, you know, there's a there can be a deposit requirement. But we don't necessarily know the nature of how complicated an application will be and an estimate from thirteen years ago, right? Will not be reflected or what it's possible is now. So we based our analysis on the time it takes our planners typically to process these types of applications and then based on our hourly rate. Those proposal for you all for for what? There's a deposit structure. The idea being that when people make their application that they're paying that full fee, but if it does go over, you can go and charge for additional costs if things happen wrong. So plan your set for some of your own. So it's a wise choice to update your fees, otherwise it's a pity expense for applications and developments.
I'm more shocked with the differences. I mean, it's pretty drastic.
Yeah.
So that means the city's debating a lot of this, but many, many.
But but that's not just your bit for a lot of people. Yeah. And and, you know, some of our cities find a way to budget for some of their land use because they want to, you know, with like a pre-application conference, you don't want to necessarily have that costly. Because if you want development to come in and learn about the process so that they can know, because they don't get prior down the process and know significant improvements that are going to be required and, you know, so a pre-application can be a great. But we still see them underestimating the cost and that they're still staff. And often it can be oversimplified, like, oh, that preapplication's super simple, but we're actually bringing in all the departments for review and then staff time to do that review, come prepared, and then issue a report that's after it. You know, it takes time, so.
And you stated that it wasn't updated since twenty twelve, so in the twenty nineteen, that's usually just.
I believe the twenty nineteen did a few fees, but there was not a comprehensive cost. I think it was two thousand and twelve or that time period when when we did, we looked at the whole picture.
Wow.
We did some increase. I'm thinking three of the fees got increased since that thing. I don't know, I don't believe that, but the total analysis, it's been ten years.
My only question is, the increase in fees, is this going to affect the progress of the schools at all or are all their applications put in on?
It should not affect the the school based upon them having already submitted. And typically, fees don't after the resolution.
Gain your interest.
Take effect January one of twenty twenty-six. So there's plenty of coverage for anybody that's close to having something ready. I've got two months. It wasn't intended to be a god show or a surprise. So staff is recommending that you conduct a informal public hearing, allow public comment before you adopt the resolution. Or change.
Just an informal break. We will now hold an informal public hearing in regards to resolution twenty-five dash zero one-two, which is a resolution setting fees and cost recovery policies for development and land use applications and repealing resolution number nineteen and zero one five. Anyone have any comments?
Um, mayor, just a clarification that we did have a little change of the brain. I was looking at the yellow sheet over there. That's wrong. Or bending state. Yes, it is a replacement for the, they say that it was a slight change to the charge for the review of my old civil engineering plans, reduce that to one point five percent of the estimated construction costs, not five percent.
Bottom page three.
Okay, I hear what you were saying, but my question now is when it goes to the land development contract for you, he tells him sheets. It says resolution twenty-five twelve, appendix B.
Appendix B is the way of use of all of the. There are two appendix.
Okay, so that's not for the people that has the employees.
Yeah, you heard your question. He's yelling two eighty-third street. We have an idea or a figure of what her fee's gonna be. Her fee. I don't have that.
The fees.
If you want to build new buildings in Jervis, it's not her fees.
Isn't she getting paid to to do this stuff?
Oh, yeah, she's she's from cog.
That was my question.
Should be on our budget.
Yeah, the cog is paid separately.
And that was in the budget package that I have from last last week.
Yes.
Okay.
From my understanding, her her rate of pay would be unchanged or the comp rate would be unchanged. By the way, you can report rate for the cost of implementing them. We pay for either way. But as of right now, the city's paying disproportionate amount of that, which is basically subsidized by taxpayers. In this case, they're saying, hey, this is not going to be for this for you. The applicant has to pay for it. I believe he's more concerned with her being here for the cog and what they're charging us to not be here and help us.
You tablet.
Oh, well, I'd love to speak to, I'm not pardoning for being right now, Mr. Membership Fees that all our members pay. And the work that we've been, we're making up in the interest of the cops for
Correct. Mr. Gil, we actually do have a contract with them, so if you'd like to copy that, please do with city manager and he'll be able to come for you. Let us know what the prices are.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? Not seeing any. Public hearing is now closed. And now for new business.
I didn't.
Where's that? It's right in the grand hearing. Adopt the resolution.
First one or the second one?
What time? Four.
I make a resolution, be in motion. Prove the resolution number twenty-five dash oh one-two, a resolution to ease and cross recovery policies for development and land use applications and repealing resolution number I nineteen dash zero one five.
Yes, I can sort of say an area of the, or we have motion second roll call or likely it's councilwoman Gittes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ray.
Aye.
Council President Ray.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gittes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gould.
Aye.
Now for new business. Resolution twenty-five dash zero one-four supporting Jervis School District's application for structural updates of school buildings. Thank you for coming.
Mayor, council, the page fifty-six of your packet, I believe, is a draft resolution followed by a letter. School district reached out to the city and asked for a letter in support of a grant application that they have submitted for seismic upgrades of public school facilities, seeking signs of community support to the people that they're applying for the grant for. A lot of schools have been putting in for seismic grants, a lot of schools have been getting them. And it is an excellent opportunity because I, well, we'll let the school certificate speak to it, but the combination of having funds for the match required and going for the grant gives you a better chance of getting the grant. And they're in great position based upon the financial plan that they've put together. Obviously, they asked for a letter of support and staff is encouraging the council to adopt this resolution and authorize the mayor to sign the letter that is attached to the resolution. No public hearing is required.
Does council just discuss anything about it first?
I have something that's only slightly related, but O P E has a really good special on how important seismic retrofitting is in Oregon and the negative impacts of not doing it. I've watched like ten times. Highly recommend that everybody watch it and I'm glad that we have the opportunity to support this.
Yeah, we actually get a lot of this information with the with the Department of thirteen, so we know how valuable it actually is to saving lives. Do we have a motion to accept?
I motion that we accept the resolution number twenty-five zero one-four and resolution to support for the Jervis School District Seismic Recovery and Mutation Grant.
We have six. We'll vote from the left. Councilwoman Gittes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ray.
Aye.
Council President Ray.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gittes. And Councilman Gould.
Aye.
All eyes.
Mr. Mayor and Council, we are blessed with the presence of the general manager of Data Vision. The city has, well, you probably know it's a hundred years, we've had a franchise agreement with Data Vision for a number of years. It has recently expired. They have been patiently waiting for the city to be a good place in order to take care of this housekeeping business as well. Todd is here tonight. You have a draft ordinance in your council packet. An ordinance takes two meetings to approve. Staff is recommending that you vote to approve the first reading by title of this ordinance. The general manager is here to answer questions. The most significant difference that is being proposed is that this is going from a three percent franchise agreement to a seven percent franchise agreement. Most of the telecommunication franchise agreements are seven percent. This one has been three and that's the most significant change. I would request that the council allow the opportunity for the general manager to speak as he came seeking and taking to do something.
Please go forward.
Jervis telephone, also known as Day Vision, has served this community for over a hundred years in different aspects as we started off with just telephone and we migrated through as evolution of technology has changed. At this point in time, we serve the entire city and surrounding area with fiber optics, something that started through back in ninety-nine, nineteen ninety-nine, we were one of the first companies on the west coast to provide such a thing. Jervis should be very proud to say that they are one hundred percent served by a fiber provider. The neat thing about fiber is that it allows you to be future-proof. Electronics on the end is the thing that gets changed, you just want to have to come back and totally overhaul our plant that we've been overhauling the last twelve plus years here in town. We are a hundred percent underground in town. There is no aerial fiber. There is no aerial facilities. We worked really hard to get rid of the aerial plane. Helped to view by the town. We are proud to say that we are local and we are part of the community. We hope that we find that the our franchise agreement fits the needs of the city as well as our community. Do you have any questions? Don't forget us.
Love your service.
I was gonna say, you guys are happy, we're happy.
We're happy.
Any questions? Not seen him. Thank you very much for.
Motion to read by title only with the amendment of seven percent. And set it for your next council meeting December fourth would be.
I make a motion to set a meeting for ordinance granting number two-five dash zero zero five.
I will take a, we'll take a motion to introduce the ordinance by title.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
You can just say so moved. You can just say so moved.
So moved.
Oh, second.
Need a vote, correct? Does he have one second? So we'll do a roll call again. Councilwoman Gittes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ray.
Aye.
Council President Ray.
Aye.
Councilman Gittes.
Aye.
And Councilman Gould.
Aye.
All eyes ready.
And just to clarify, mayor, I should have had a script ready for you, so now I will read the ordinance by title only and then we'll actually take the first, except, well, the second motion accepting the first reading and then we'll have the second reading. It should have script on it. I mean, I could say my bad, or it's bad, is my bad. So for the first reading, ordinance number twenty-five dash zero zero five, ordinance granting a non-exclusive telephone franchise to Jervis cell phone.
I make a motion to accept the first reading.
Oh, second.
Second roll call votes. Councilwoman Gittes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ray.
Aye.
Council President Ray.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gittes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gould.
Aye.
All eyes again ready.
Fantastic job and we'll have the second and hopefully adoption of the ordinance at your December meeting.
We will now get into staff reports, starting with city manager.
I would like to attend a conference in late March, early April. My employment contract says that education is good. Actually, I think that's what my contract says. City encourages professional growth and development. Every year, there's a Oregon City County Managers Association Conference, which is a lot of technical training. But every so often, there's a conference involving the city managers of Alaska, Washington, and Oregon altogether, which gives us a greater amount of money to spend on training and top-notch speakers. And in late March, there is this gathering of city managers from three states in my home state of Alaska. I am not expecting the city to pay for me to go to Alaska. I am asking the council for one, pay my four hundred dollar registration fee. And two, allowing me to be there on work time during the last three days of March and the first two days of April. I will cover all other expenses as it relates to travel, food, and other things, but I'm asking that you pay, the city pays four hundred for the registration fee and allow me to attend as on the job. And that we, if you do approve, that you're willing to move the city council meeting from April second back to April nine. from April second back to April ninth, so that I can be here for you. Those are the three things that I am asking your permission for the record aspire to making travel arrangements.
Can't put a question.
I just have one, because the community is probably asked, what what information are you hoping to bring back to the community to better service?
The regional conference tends to be on broader spectrums in order to economic development is definitely going to be a major, one-third of the topics. There'll also be a fair amount of, shall we say, broad nation. What's going to happen as it relates to federal funding, long-term plan? Are we going to be seeing it, not seeing it? Are we going to be seeing in different forms? There will be federal agency and slayer. So a vast majority is economic development and federal partnership, which has changed within the last couple of years. And then the third one that's going to be pretty relevant, not quite as much, emergency management. Emergency management is something in which city managers have to deal with. Most of the, in most cases, the city manager is the emergency manager. And so emergency management planning will be a third sort of secondary topic that will be brought up during the three-day after days of training. What I hope to bring back is a lot broader spectrum, especially as it relates to housing and economic development to the city of service.
Thank you.
I know there was budget money set aside for counselors to do trainings. If we have not used that money, is that something we can allocate for you to go to your training?
There's also money set aside for myself as well and I I've used very little bit. I went to LLC for one day, two days. I went to one other one-day conference, so budget-wise, there's funds there.
Yeah, there should be, there should be money set aside. There always is for training for not just counselors, but all the employees in the city. Being that it's not even going to hit what's left over from this year. Whatever we budget for next year should be able to cover the registration fees since you're taking care of the rest. But again, it's up to the council.
Just need consensus.
Yeah.
I.
Yeah, we need one baby.
I don't really want to. I, I think this is, I mean, especially with, James had an excellent question. Yeah, a lot of real reasons why the beneficial to the city, it seems like a number here. Yeah, please do. That's my take.
I'm okay with moving to December meeting as well, or the January or April.
I gave you a, moving on then, you okay with this one? Uh, moving on, I gave you a draft two thousand and six meeting schedule. There will be a formal budget calendar created in February, but I put some estimated dates on it. There are three months in which I am suggesting we change our meeting date. January, because the first Thursday is January first. April, because the city manager will be in Alaska. And July, because I believe it's like July third or the fourth of, of the night before the Fourth of July type activity start. And I just thought a little on that night. So I'm asking council's blessing, knowing that this may change. But I like to create a plan for the year as it relates to working on the budget calendar, working on the elections calendar, and this would be our meeting calendar. I'll be creating a couple bunch of meeting dates on here. And I'm asking, again, I, it's a tool that I would like to use. If the council has any issues or concerns, I would appreciate them sharing with me. I don't need a consensus, I don't need a vote. I am putting it out there as a guide for twenty twenty six.
Appreciate it. Yeah, very much appreciate it. The other thing, can you please fix the May fourteenth and June fourth years? Where's my last name?
Um.
You got a story and then you better bring it.
Yeah. This is an item that I just want you to have on your thought processes. My contract does more or less require, maybe harsh word, that an evaluation be done of your city manager in October. Which is almost a year away. However, it takes three months to do my evaluation. We spend a month talking about what we want to do and how we want to do it. And we'll spend a month doing it and then we'll spend a month taking it apart and giving me the message. So essentially, you'll be starting in the late summer on that evaluation. The real question is whether or not you want to do one prior to that. You're welcome to do, call them as often as you want to call them, either informal or formal. But I just want to put this out there that you're expected to do one in October. Whether or not you want to do one before then or not, it's purely the council's choice and decision. I just want to make you aware of that understanding and that agreement. So you can think about it and I'm not asking for you about. But, but I also don't want you to think it's going to happen organically unless you want to go through the process.
My perception is very important for everybody to get evaluation done themselves. So they don't want to sit down when they make a consent, no matter what position they're in.
If you want to shoot for a formal one, for an October, that's two.
You're being very honest.
Yeah.
We had a great bunch of meetings the other night, I felt. We were missing one member that I intend to reach out to and gauge their interest. But I would like to propose to the council that when the audit is done, instead of the auditors coming to the council meeting, that we have the auditors come to the budget. I want to get council buy-off on doing that. It will engage more people in the audit process. It will engage our budget people in the audit process. You will also be present, of course, and you're the fiduciary responsibility responsible party. So you're in a position to question the auditor. But I would like to make it a budget meeting rather than a council meeting for when the auditors are prepared to come here. And I, I would like your buy-off on making that change.
I personally love that idea. Yeah, I'd like to have the rest of the rest of budget giving members here for that.
I included your packet a write-up of our goals. We are scheduled to meet again with Beth on November twentieth at seven P M. To go through the objectives and prioritization. I do think that the prioritization is going to be the toughest part. Got our lists, got our desires, now it's figuring out what it is we're going to do. So I am proposing that November third, twentieth at seven o'clock, we have meeting with Beth and I'm asking council's commitment to, for that particular date and that I can.
In November what, twentieth?
It's Thursday. Yeah, two weeks, two weeks from today.
I also attached in your packet a draft agenda for your December meeting. I also gave you some information about some administrative reorganization that I have been involved in with our staff. I have been advertising for two weeks, almost three now, for a police chief. I have one applicant so far. I admit informally, I have set up an interview for that applicant middle of next week. I am involving other professional law enforcement people because I want to have that expertise in the room to conduct the interview. So most likely, it will happen out of town. I have one candidate, no, I take those two back. I have two candidates for other police officer positions that we have opened. And I anticipate I'm meeting one of them informally tomorrow morning. And we are interviewing the other one.
My next year.
Sometime next week. So we're making some progress. But the amount of engagement with police chief candidates has been somewhat limited. I've had a couple others call and ask questions, including about finances. One candidate that I have met with and will be interviewed next week, I have worked with before in a contractual relationship in which he was a police chief of the city that I was a city manager of nearby and contracted that police department services. So I have some familiarity with them. Operationally, what I'm seeking is input from within the profession as to other aspects as it relates to what we want from police chief here. Way of community engagement, public relations, school relations, professional integrity. So that's why I'm engaging other law enforcement people when I question and interview the police chief candidate next week. That's where I sit right now as it relates to H R personnel issues. And I think that's all I have. Happy to answer questions about other topics or these topics. Just what things are.
Yeah, I have a question around, I've talked to somebody around. You talked about engaging other police departments for certain aspects of the job that you aren't familiar with. And you have your own relationship with them. Just because of public opinion is their ability to patrol, I mean, something that's brought up during the interview process?
Yes.
Thank you. We're already getting into applicants for that position though. Are any consensus on why they're just not interested? Some to do with?
Some of it has to do with our conversation or contracting or not. And I have been very clear that the council is, this council has made a commitment that we were not to go into. You know, that we had town hall meeting, we had conversation and we are going that way. Some of it's about, you know, finance. What are we going to do about our internal fund finance and what's our plan? How's it affect recruiting and police services? We have excellent facilities here, which has been a real selling point of it. But, but we, the city of Turvis has had turnover and we've had challenges. And within the close-knit law enforcement community, there are not commensaries.
I have a question that I have.
Yes, ma'am.
In regards to hiring a police chief, certainly about the round to the budget and why we can't keep a consistent police chief around? And what kind of background check doing are you doing on those chiefs or your candidates to make sure that they don't come with a shady pass from another location?
Actually, the state, I always get the.
D P S S T. D P S S T.
There's a state agency that has a six-page description of what is required in the way of a background check. And that person doing the background check either has to be a licensed private investigator or a city employee. You can't just hire Uncle Joe to go check this guy out. The state agency has very, it's a, it's a laundry list, I've seen it. A full page of different topics and stuff like that. They are very specific because actually, and, and I don't mean this in a, in a, in a insensitive way. Actually, you're hiring someone to be a part of the state law enforcement agency because they do the certification. And so therefore, in order to certify and have a certified chief, they have a standard of the process and the ability of the person doing the background check in order to make sure that their standard of someone being a part of the state law enforcement agency is an acceptable person.
Yeah, because we in the public here all the time, where they hire this police officer that came from another jurisdiction and became with a, with a shady pass. And we don't find that until afterwards, after they committed, you know, something nefarious. So that's why I wanted to ensure that when we, you guys, when you guys hire somebody, that they're worthy of being our police chief of charge.
And it's also why I'm going a little bit further, just because I know the guy, I don't want it to be a selection based upon that. I want to make sure, I'm really covering myself, my own. Because I want the selection to be a clean selection, which is why I'm going to have two or three senior law enforcement people from other agencies involved in the.
Rick, as you brought it up, I was assuming that the background checks is sent by a city employee or a private investigator will be like using a private investigator, I'm assuming, for the background check.
I'm not understanding your question.
You said the background check was done by either a city.
It will be done either by a private investigator or I'm going to be putting somebody a temporary hire on our payroll.
Got you, thank you. Next to the agenda.
Right, sorry, I was late, I was dealing with a trailer and bitch. They got it out, bro. So for the month of October, we had eighty-eight officer service. Pre-arrest, forty-two traffic stops, twenty-two traffic citations, thirty-two traffic warnings. We assisted other agencies six times in the two ordinance violations. During the month of October, I attended the International Association Chiefs of Police Conference. I was able to participate in workshops and network with chiefs from across the country, gaining better knowledge and innovative ideas. We are like the city manager mentioned, we are interviewing a new candidate for the full-time police officer position in the following week. The other candidate that was in backgrounds, we're just wrapping up her background. We're still doing a little bit of follow-up on that. And other than that, we appreciate the support in the community as we work, working back to appropriate setting up.
Sir. Thanks, sir. Next, please.
Not a lot exciting to report, a lot of winterizing, getting ready for power out of this, we know always happen in the winter. Making some preparations, some critical machinery that we have had issues with and working on making repairs in ones that we have not been able to find a solution for yet. And we're still chasing issue around solids, like those installed with the wastewater plant upgrade. So it's being documented and an ongoing issue with it being chased down with resolution.
It's a warranty issue though, to be honest with you. Yes, thank you.
You need an extra bump.
Oh, I bought them plenty, don't worry.
They're all falling leaves doing. Thank you guys a lot.
Not yet. Nothing too exciting.
Thank you.
What about the F A C O was the other thing, right?
That's what, we're not sure what to do with it. We got a, a best bit for repairs on it, we're not sure if we're going to do that, so. Weighing our options. Weighing our options.
Does the council have any questions on the check register itself? You have a chance to read through. So you have a couple of questions on the companies who they were, that was identified.
Yeah, yeah.
Just red W advisors. Who's that? But no, for the question, we will move on. Uh, so there are more questions, I like, um.
I see we paid um Chief Lawhams still, um, is this the last time we became paying City Shore? I'm sorry, sir, so there's two payments to City Shore with the chief, we just, this is the last, let's see these.
I don't have anything to report, I'm with the rest of the council. And the council reports. Ladies and gentlemen, we are now going to go into executive session for order one ninety-two. Dot six six zero, new H, so the council can turn the legal rights and duties of the public body in regards to current litigation or litigation like to file. We will open this meeting afterwards again.